Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg's Town Meeting for the Evening of Monday, August 4th, 2025. Just to let you know, the Board of Commissioners will be holding a closed executive session following this meeting to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose and matters directly related thereto. The authority for this meeting in closed session for this purpose is permitted by the General Division's Article Section 3-305B3, Annotated Code of Maryland, which authorizes us to meet in closed session to discuss possible purchase of vacant property on South Seaton Avenue. So that will be a closed session after the this open meeting ends. So I had to read that legally. With that, I invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking ahead to our future meetings, we have National Night Out coming up for the community on August 5th in Eugene Myers Park from 6 to 8. There's always a good time, so please bring the family. We do have a workshop coming up on rental registration on August 18th, at which is a Monday at 7:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom. We have our Parks and Rec Committee meeting coming up on August 19th, which would be that Tuesday at 7:00 PM here in the town office. And then our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be September 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom. Are there any other meetings that need to be announced? Okay, I think we're good. All right, so before moving on, Commissioners, I would like to, with your permission and your approval, when we come to, when it comes to things that we're voting on, I'd like to first make a motion. So is there a motion to accept? And then when we have a second, that will bring it to discussion. And then that doesn't mean anything more than let's discuss. Because then if there is no motion, if nobody makes a motion, then the motion would just die. It would save us a lot of time. So trying to follow more Roberts Rules of Law will bring it to a motion where you have discussion and then the motion may or may not be shot down from there in hopes of moving things along. But I wanted to explain that the purpose of that. I wanted your feedback if that's something that you're open to. You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. So that's the purpose. It's not me, you know. Okay, it's just trying to get it to discussion through emotion. Okay. So with that, let's move on to approving the meeting minutes for July 14th, 2025. Or July 14th, yes. Is there a motion to accept July 14th's meeting minutes? As presented?
Same here.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion or comment? And I do, Commissioner Turnquist, I do think you had one tiny little, one word that you wanted to have added at the bottom of
Yeah, and Sabrina was going to take care of that at the bottom of the first page of the minutes.
Yeah. It was just the word grant.
Yeah, the second bullet, the town was awarded a grant in the amount of, she was going to take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other comments? Okay. Hearing none. There is a motion on the floor to accept July 14th's meeting minutes as presented. Would that amendment have been already taken place with Ms. King? All in favor, please, did I do that right? No, thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Any abstain? All right. Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to the police report.
Good evening. I am Deputy Barstow. And I have the police report for July. Start out with staffing. It's just myself because Deputy Honaker is still out on FMLA. I had three days of annual slash holiday. Quite a bit of training in this month. I attended a social media and open source investigations class. I was a full day. Put in for that because I felt that was, I do a lot of my investigations in town. I felt that was a good class to take the kind of help of my investigating. We also had, I had two days of a red dot, red dot sites handguns, the whole agency went through that. I helped out with the Boys and Girls Club badges for baseball. That was actually, that was in Frederick. And then we had the Farmers Market event on the 19th. No fleet issues, handled 61 calls to service, seven traffic stops. Some calls worth highlighting, which I'm sure you guys probably heard about both of them. First one is subject arrested for threats to schoolchildren. Arrest led to assault on a law enforcement officer and a TASER deployment. That was put out by the Sheriff's Office as a press release last week. And then also the vape store in Silo Hill was burglarized overnight. They had about $8,000 stolen from the cash register and that's under investigation by one of our detectives, Schultz, and with assistance of myself, looking at the cameras and all that stuff. And then I just want to point out for like the more detailed one, the burglary, the theft and the MDOP destruction of property, they all say one, but they're all the kind of or the theft and the burglary were basically the same thing, same call. And destruction of property and the disturbance, some of them's kind of floated together because those two incidents I discussed prior. But other than that, any questions?
First of all, I want to thank you because it sounds like it was a very busy month. It's always I know that there was a lot of talk in the community about some of the events that happened. It's very reassuring to know that we have persons here to be responsive.
Well, yeah. I'll be back soon, a couple of weeks.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me re, I just wanted to thank you for your service with everything going on. Usually I'm the one saying, press the button. It's been a busy month and it's reassuring to know that we have someone here to be reactive to those situations. I just had one question. With the traffic statistics, do we know how many warnings and citations would break down to like Maine and South Seaton and North?
Um, so I did focus that. Pretty much all, all the stops were, were those. I mean, I didn't, I didn't do, I don't think I did any stops like on 15 or anything like that. And I did spend a lot of time, obviously my presence there alone does slow a lot of people down, which is great. Like if I sit on Main Street, I mean, people just, you can see them hit their brakes and stuff like that. So, but pretty much all my traffic was basically on North and South Seaton and also East and West Main is where I kind of focused, like really downtown.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions?
All right. I just have one comment. Just so you know, the, the money that we saved from Deputy Honaker being off. We are going to be using that for some overtime enforcement for the first several Saturday nights. When the university students come back to town just to do a little more awareness and, you know, let them see some, some presence. And we'll try to get things off in a calm manner. Just so you know, that's going to be happening.
Yeah, and that's like at 9:00 PM through 1:00 AM. So it's like, it was kind of like a good balance for, you know, when a lot of those noise complaints and parties may or may not come in.
Okay. Is there a need for Fridays too, or is it mostly on Saturdays or?
No, it's mostly on Saturdays and I'm already setting up times that I'm going to go around and talk to each area, to the students in person, trying to tell them what we expect out of them and what they can expect out of us and how we can be good partners. So.
Great, thank you.
And for Friday nights, um, once Deputy Honaker is back, we alternate Friday nights. So as, as long as there's not, we didn't take a leave or anything, Friday nights are usually covered anyway.
Okay. Great. Thank you for the updates. Thank you.
And our questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. I'll be giving the Town Manager's Report for Ms. Bullets. So related to streets, staff planted flowers and added mulch to the welcome signs. Related to parks, staff repaired the park for Community Heritage Day. Wastewater, related to wastewater, we had a precipitation surplus of six inches over the last six months. Trash pickup will remain on Mondays during the month of August. And the note, worthy item to highlight is that staff collected samples throughout the town for lead and copper testing and all results look good. If you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer or pass them along to Ms. Bullets.
All right. Any questions? Okay. All right. Hearing none. Moving on. Thank you. Next, we have the Grant Administrator Report.
Hey, so this is the Grant Administrator's Report as of July 18th, as shown on page 13 of the agenda packet. Ms. Shaw has currently have, she has 20 active grants and nine grants waiting for an award or denial, denial announcement. I'll just highlight a few projects for the bathroom and concession stand project in the community park. The project is complete and it's officially open to the public. Ms. Shaw is working to submit the final granted reimbursement for to close out the project. For the water clarify, clarifier project on Hampton Valley Road. The contractor, Conawaygo, is actively working on site and project completion is expected November 2025. Rainbow Lake Parking Lot Construction near Rainbow Lake, this project is complete. Contractor removed the last bit of sealed fencing on July 10th. And Ms. Shaw is waiting on the final invoice before submitting for reimbursement and closing out this project. Related to the DePaul Street Waterline Project, a portion of the project was completed on June 6th. Ms. Shaw is now working on the final grant reports and preparing for the files for a grant audit in October. And we're waiting for a date from the contractor for a full repaving of the streets. The paving is not part of the grant funding. For the Creamery Road Pub Station Replacement Project, the final punch list items are still being worked by the contractor, Conawaygo. And the red trail rebuild in the Emmitsburg Water Shed. Ms. Shaw has been working with Mr. O'Donnell to get the trail signage installed. Signage was installed on July 21st and she's planning to submit final grant reimbursement to close this grant out. And that's the end of Administrator's Report.
Okay, any questions or comments, Commissioner Turnquist?
I had a comment. I wanted to thank Mrs. Shaw for reformatting the grant report. Before it was an order of grants regardless of what the project was. And now, for instance, North Seaton, all the grants are together with the North Seaton project. And it makes it so much easier to follow. So I really appreciate that.
Pass along our thanks. Any other questions or comments? I just have a quick question. You may or may not be able to answer, and if not, that's okay. I can find out later. So with the bathroom and concession stand open, that means we have our new automatic locks are now functioning to get into the bathrooms. Is that part of it? Yes, perfect. And where I guess it was, I don't know if it was where they ran a water line or electricity under the walking path. It was kind of paved over, but it's still got a big divot in it. Is there plans to smooth that out after construction is, now that construction is complete? And you don't have to answer.
I don't know for sure. I can find out.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all. Any other questions?
I'm going to follow up on something there, when that trail where she just talked about, if they're going to do that asphalt work, can they, where the little bridge is on the trail? Can they fill in that gap for strollers and wheelchairs? It's a, it's a pretty good bounce up.
When the storm bank comes across.
No, I think you're talking about the bridge.
The little walk, the little walk and bridge.
Yeah, where the little storm drain, they put a little piece of pipe or something.
There is, there is a drainage, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's always had a dip, but.
Diane said she had trouble getting across that. We got.
She's not always there or something.
Okay.
What, what, what time is the hours of the locks? The all night locks, you know?
I think it's 7:00 AM until dark. I think.
Seven, right, 7:07, 7:08, oh my god.
Hasn't been going well so far. Okay, good. That's great. Thank you. Very exciting. All right. If there are no other questions, go ahead.
We'll be hoping, uh, hoping to open the concession stand for soccer.
Nice.
The new one. We're getting ready to get ready to set everything up inside since they got the occupation or operational permit so we can get in.
Oh, nice. Are you, will that be for practices and games or select?
It'll be for soccer and for football or for the
Nice.
I guess the older kids, baseball, if they play up here this year.
All right.
Bay briefly. And then we have a tournament in October that we use both. So hopefully we can use both of them. We had a surprise visit today from the Health Department for the concession stands. Did you know that? I don't know if you knew enough. They passed. They went through them and they passed them. And that Sabrina took care of that. They called me and I was at Baltimore, so I couldn't come up. Sabrina took care of it.
Thank you, Sabrina. So if anybody needs a snack on those days, come on by, whether you're there to watch the game or not. All right, so moving on from the, okay, we're at Town Operations Specialist Report.
Good evening, everybody. Let's see, for the month, the 22 East Main Street Beautification Project actually got started this week with the stone facade on the bulletin board. Painting is yet to happen. And that's all been funded by the Legacy Grant. So it's going to look really nice. We're doing some updates, going to add a bench, flower planters. So it'll look really nice. The Farmer's Market that we had in July 19th went very well. It wasn't as well as tended as May, but we had still had a good turnout. People were buying, kids had a great time. And again, we hit our target demographic, a lot of young families. It was, it went well. Still working on the emergency action plans for emergency drinking water. And let's see, we're working on the vacant property registration and tax, which will be presented a little bit later tonight. Been working with the Mount on partying the park planning, which is coming up on August 16th for the incoming students. And I'm working on the time capsule for June 2026. And Alliance Club is going to be helping out with that. We're going to try to install it during Heritage Day. Again, involve the schools and businesses and residents in that. And again, we've got a grant for that, so it'll work out well. And then a lot of trainings and miscellaneous items throughout the month you can read, but just busy as always. Have any questions?
We do have a free meal coming up this month?
Yes, yes, it is.
Is it 13?
I would have to double check that. It's a Wednesday. It's Wednesday. And I just sent out meeting invitations for next year's. The meeting's not going to be until October. I wanted to get that on the books now because we're going to start planning again for next year. We have enough people who are interested in doing it again throughout the year. So we're going to continue this program. It worked very well. So.
Do you still have good turnouts that are coming?
Yes. And more and more people are starting to eat there, which is what we want, to get that fellowship component going. But it's, they're averaging about 100 meals a night. So that's good.
Yeah, we've had good turnout so far in this month. It's the Lions Club is doing it, so.
Yes.
Nice. All right, only one question. The bricks, are they coming up again in September? I can't remember.
It's the fall and I believe the cutoff is October 1st. I can double check that.
Okay, so it's live right now?
Yes, anybody can start, but it's not going in until the fall.
Right.
And we started handing out the updated flyers. And we are giving out information at the Farmer's Market. The mayor had a table. We'll be doing that as well on social media and we'll get it out there more again.
Awesome.
And then the first round of bricks should be here another three weeks. And several of the families that did the memorial bricks want to be there for the installation. So I'm coordinating with them to be there for that.
Yeah, do have one more thing. EOPCC, Dr. Portier emailed me and said they have a load of, a thing of bicycles that came in for kids if they need bicycles. So if you know anybody needs any, any children, any bicycles. The Rotary Club supplies them to the clinic. She gives them out free.
Would it be okay if I reached out to the Seaton Center about that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
They want, they want to get rid as many bicycles as they can.
I'll get working on that tomorrow and I'll include you in the email.
Okay. Get me your Dr. Portier.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Town Planner's Report.
The Town Planner's Report, I listed the permit applications that were processed during the month of July. Related to the ongoing developments, we issued the occupancy permit to Federal Stone. We're awaiting aspills from them so we can figure out what the stormwater management and bay restoration fee would be. Same thing goes for the Creamery Court Extension. Another thing to note is that Glow Fiber Project, I should tell, they put in a, an application for a right of way encroachment. And that has been, that has been reviewed. Related to text amendments, we're working on rental registration and vacant properties and also have been working to revamp Title 16 and 17 of the town code. Related to MS4, we're continuing to work with Eric to address MD comments on MS4 report. The comprehensive plan, as you know, was adopted last month and it has been submitted to the county and the state. Related to grants, a new application for FY26 for the Community Legacy Grant was submitted on July 1st, 2025. And the current application or the current grant FY25, that application has been reopened because we have some excess funds left. And the DNR grant and was the final invoice got approved last month as well. And I've listed the meetings that I attended during the month of July.
Thank you. Just a quick question about Glow Fiber with the right of ways. Are they going to be doing that in phases, I would imagine? Do you know where the first right of way is that they're looking to start?
They haven't prepared that yet. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Going on to Commissioner comments. All right, we'll start with Commissioner Hagan.
So on the August, I attended the Thurmont Grange Communities Meeting. Then they're going to start trying to become more involved in Emmitsburg. It's been a number of years since Emmitsburg has its own Grange group here. So hopefully they're going to show up at the Farmer's Market in August. So they're going to reach back out then. I did a tour of the Seaton Center to check out their new ability for the food pantry and just want to say they now have that the deep freezer. So they're offering protein now as part of their list and pulling in. So it's a big improvement. Working to try to find some more sources to help get that. Also wanted to say thank you to the mayor. During the last Farmer's Market, he noticed an opportunity for one of the food truck vendors to see if they could come out here on other days and like do breakfast or something. And that's, all of us need to start thinking that way to get out and bring, you know, opportunities to our community and everything. So I want to thank him a lot for reaching out to them. Doing, you know, having that idea and reaching out and going over and talking to the vendor and trying to arrange that.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Nothing. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Sweeney?
I don't have anything right now.
Okay, Commissioner Hoover?
Yes, I do have a comment. I'm going to clarify, this past water bill that we received, I got a phone call. Because in there is a newsletter, it talked about the reduction of the water rates. So when she read it, she was my wife and she read it, she misread it. So it said about a 15% decrease. So I just want to clarify. The 15% decrease the Commissioners voted on was a decrease from the 36% that would start July, this past July 1. So instead of being 36%, it's 15%. So but, so you physically won't see an actual decrease in the water bill, which is what she was, the way she read it and the way she looked at it. That's what she was seeing. So I just wanted to make sure if I understood that that's the way, the way it was voted and the way it was approved was July 1 would actually physically see a 15% increase in your water bill. Instead of the 36% that was previously voted on. But nobody's going to see an actual decrease in their water bill just yet.
Thank you. As far as comments go, I want to thank everybody for their hard work for the, the Farmer's, Farmer's Market Days. And encourage you that if you have some spare time, come on out and volunteer. We're always looking for people to come out and be worker bees. Also, I don't normally read a statement, but as President of the Board, I just wanted to, I know there's been a lot of discussion. And I just want to make some clarifying points regarding our Advisory Board Committees. Wanted to reiterate and clarify that we have some Advisory Board Committees and not governing ones, specifically our Citizens Advisory Committee and Parks and Rec Committees. They're Advisory Boards. They are there to provide feedback and input. And from there can come back to Town Council. The Town Council ultimately decides what outcomes, what the outcomes will be based on the information that we have. So that's why it's so important to go to our committees and come to public comment. Because we like to gather as much information and perspectives as we can. Healthy civil discourse includes a range of perspectives that reflect the diversity of our town. If we want to build a stronger, more inclusive Emmitsburg, residents and town members must feel safe and respected when sharing ideas, even when those ideas differ. Open, respectful dialogue is essential to meaningful progress, whether in person or online. Every resident and business owner is welcome to attend our committee meetings, share ideas, ask questions, raise concerns. And I encourage anyone and everyone who feels strongly about anything to please participate in our town meetings. Come on out. We have plenty of seats. Come to our workshops. That was well attended earlier. And if you have the time and the passion, join one of our committees. We have several openings. We have a very small number of dedicated volunteers who are passionate about projects and a very small number of members who share on our committees, who work on our committees. But we all share the same goal. We all want to build a better Emmitsburg. So before casting judgment, let's please, I invite everyone, get involved, be a part of the conversation while it's happening. Listen to ideas that are being shared, understand backgrounds behind proposals, votes and decisions. So that we can build a culture of respect and participation and really work towards meaningful progress. So I just wanted to put that out there that we have several openings on committees. And please come out to our meetings. We're looking for that engagement and involvement. Thank you. And then moving on to Mayor Davis for comments.
Okay, good evening, everybody. As you see, we're missing our Town Manager tonight. She is in Florida with a new grandbaby. She has become a grandmother.
Congratulations.
So that's where she is and everybody's doing well and we're happy for her and her family. So that's.
Was it a baby girl or a baby boy? Little girl. Okay, congratulations.
Yeah, you bailed me out on that one thing.
That's usually what the females talk about.
I was going to say twins, one of each.
Women want to know names.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Yeah. With the food truck that Commissioner Hagan talked about. This Monday, the food truck will be at the Fire Department. And the reason we picked Monday, there's nowhere to get breakfast in Emmitsburg on Monday. And this food truck does breakfast and then lunch, which consists mainly of hot dogs. And since the farmer's market, I have been to Thurmont to get a hot dog. The, the hot dog was just phenomenal. It's hard to, it's got like thirty different toppings. And I think I had twenty seven of them on my shirt. And so we're going to try, give them a try this Monday. And we thought we'd take them to the firehouse first because the, of the drawing and the crowd. That the, the, nobody won the six of hearts, by the way. Nobody won the six of hearts. So I don't know what it went up to, what it's going to be this week, but nobody won the six of hearts.
Everyone's going to work tomorrow.
Yeah. But the food truck will be at the fire station, I think, probably starting about seven A M. On, on Monday, and then we're going to move it on down to the vacant lot on South Seaton if it goes and it's a good success. So with that, that's great. And to go into a little more subtle subject. The, I'm sure everyone's aware of the tragic accident that happened in Mount Airy during the flood. The flash flood last weekend. A young man lost his life, got swept into a storm drain. So with that, I've, I'm working with the, the town staff to do a survey of all of our storm drains. To see what we have to do to make sure that doesn't happen here. And, you know, we can't put grates over them, but some type of bars or something that would prevent a, a child, child from going into a drain if it does happen here. So we're, we're being proactive with that and just, so if anybody has a drain that might be hidden in their development, let us know about it. We're going to try to walk and, and find all of them. But every once in a while, there's one sticking somewhere. And that goes to anybody in the community. If you know of one that we might not know about, please let us know so we can be proactive on that and, and get that project up and running. So with that, that's all got.
Thank you. With the storm drains, is it, are you also look, I know a lot of the storm management ponds have those bigger drain. Okay. All right. Because those are the ones I know about.
Yeah, that was actually what happened. I think the, the storm management pond overflowed. That's so it was all part of that. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Davis. With that, there is no public comment. Which might be a first. We're moving on to administrative business, which there is none. And now we're moving on to consent agenda. Okay, so consent agenda, item number one, approval of proclamation making August fifth, twenty twenty five, national night out for consideration. Is there a motion? No, wait, I have to read the proclamation. I have to read the proclamation first and then, all right. Proclamation. National Night Out Tuesday, August fifth at the Eugene Myers Community Park from six to eight P M. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on the first Tuesday in August each year entitled National Night Out. And whereas National Night Out has been an annual event in the town of Emmitsburg for the past seven years. And whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in the town of Emmitsburg to join over thirty eight million people in over sixteen thousand communities from all fifty states, U S territories, Canadian cities, mil- and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer and more caring, a more caring place to live. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the town of Emmitsburg come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the board of commissioners of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty five, as national night out in Emmitsburg. And do hereby call upon all citizens, neighbors, community agencies and businesses to join the Frederick County Sheriff's Office and the national night or a National Association of Town Watch in support for the national night out in Eugene Myers Community Park. So is there a motion to approve the proclamation making August fifth, twenty twenty five, national nine, night out?
I'll make a motion to accept proclamation. Accept in Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty five, National Night Out, Emmitsburg.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. No need for discussion on this item. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? All right, motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to consent. Agenda number two for consideration, accept the resignation of Sheila Pittinger from the citizens advisory committee. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Sheila Pittinger from the citizens advisory committee?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Turnquist. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Any abstaining? All right, motion carries five to zero. And I do want to thank Ms. Pittinger for her work on the citizens advisory committee. We, as we stated, we have plenty of openings. We're always looking for business owners, residents, any interested parties in helping to brainstorm whether, making our town better. All right, with that, we're moving on to the treasurer's report.
This is the cash activity as of July twenty third, twenty twenty five. Cash balance on July first was seven million, five hundred and eighty nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety five dollars. Deposits totaling seven hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty four dollars. Withdrawals totaling one million, six hundred and fifty two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. For an operating balance forward of six million, six hundred and fifty two thousand, forty nine dollars. The top ten checks are there in the middle of the page. The fund breakdown as of seven twenty three, twenty five. The general fund, we have one point four million. Capital projects, seven hundred and thirty eight thousand. Storm water management, sixteen thousand. Water fund is negative two hundred and eighteen thousand. But I know that we've forward funded several water projects. So those reimbursements should be coming in to satisfy that balance that's in the red. ARPA, we have eight hundred and three thousand remaining. Our sewer fund, three point five million for a total balance of six point three million.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? No? Okay, hearing none, we are moving on. Thank you, Commissioner Turnquist. We have a planning commission report. Nope, no meeting for the month of July. Answer my own question. So we're moving on to agenda item number one. For consideration, approval of ordinance twenty five dash oh nine temporary taking of vehicles. So I'd like to bring this, make a motion in a second so we can bring it to discussion. And so is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty five dash oh nine temporary taking of vehicles?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty five dash oh nine titled nine temporary taking of vehicles as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. So now we'll move into discussion. Am I turning this over to anybody? All right, Ms. Brandy, come on up.
Okay, so this is an ordinance to men title nine of the Code of Emmitsburg entitled, uh, the Public Peace, Morals and Welfare. And the reason that we are deleting and voiding this ordinance is it falls under the Maryland Transportation Article in the Annotated Code of Maryland, which is a criminal code. The police would handle it. So having an ordinance really is for us is, it's pointless. It's carries more penalties on the criminal side. And if you have any questions, I can.
That was a good summary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Pretty good.
Any questions?
So it's outdated and we're going to do away with the entire ordinance.
Yes.
So it's no longer just a misdemeanor.
Correct. Correct.
Correct. All right. Um, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
No, just thanks for going through and finding these things. I know you've been working at it. Appreciate finding.
Two for two so far. All right, thank you.
Oh, oh, thank you. So there is a motion on the floor. So at this point, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Any abstaining? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item number, agenda item number two. Discussion on the implementation of a vacant property tax in the town of Emmitsburg. Since this is discussion only, I'm not going to be asking for a motion. So who do I get to turn this over to?
Hi.
All right. Hi.
Um, so this is the vacant property tax. That, well, the registration and tax ordinance. This should help the town protect neighborhoods and current investment and support revitalization. So a vacant property tax is a fee imposed on properties that are unoccupied or unused for an extended period of time. And its purpose is to encourage owners to maintain and activate their properties. Deter any long-term vacancies that harm community character. Uh, reduce safety risks and public nuisances and support revitalization, as I mentioned, especially along Main Street. So vacant properties, they contribute to blight, they decrease property values and can become safety hazards. So this ordinance is basically a proactive step to promote responsible property ownership and support our econo- economic development goals and protect the long-term health of the neighborhoods. There are many benefits and it, you know, with this ordinance, it will ensure that vacant buildings are, are locked, are regularly maintained with no more overgrown grass, broken windows, unsecured buildings, et cetera. Fees from the registration and inspections that will help on the code enforcement and legal action if needed. So the residents don't have to bear the burden. A fee structure that increases over time encourages owners to sell, rent or redevelop it rather than letting it sit empty. Uh, registration helps us identify and contact owners as well, especially absent you wants that, you know, hide but behind L S Cs. And knowing where vacant properties are located can help us, you know, basically plan smart, smartly and pursue any housing or economic development goals. And as I mentioned earlier, secure buildings, they, it will, one of the benefits is that it would secure buildings and that will reduce fire risks and squatting and crime, things like that. This will help the neighborhoods of keep them safe and keep the property values strong. And a centralized record will help departments like planning, public works, emergency services to work together more effectively. And many communities already have these programs. For example, Frederick City. Their structure for their property tax or vacant property taxes that tax rate increases each year of vacancy from two times to five times the standard rate. And annual registration is around one hundred and twenty dollars and penalties for failing to register can be as high as a thousand dollars per day. And they also charge an inspection fee of seventy five dollars per property. And you've been provided with a chart with other jurisdictions with the same kind of program. But this is what town, uh, that we're recommending for the town. So the vacant property tax will apply to commercial mixed use and residential properties in village zone, neighborhood business and general commercial zoning districts. And we'll be using our existing base property tax per just thirty six cents per dot hundred dollars of assessed value. And increase that based on years they remain vacant. So after the first year, it'll be twice the rate. After two years, it's three times the rate, three years, four times the rate, et cetera. And then it's an annual registration fee would be a hundred dollars if registered on time. And one hundred and fifty dollars for late registration. We're still figuring out penalties for like failing to register. And we're, we're suggesting an annual inspection fee of seventy dollars, seventy five dollars per property. And the inspections will be done by a certified staff member or the quote enforcement of officer, which will, you know, this fee will help on that position. So, um, we also mentioned that the packet that will, we recommend having like an exceptions for hardship cases like serious illness or death of the owner or the family member. And we've also provided you with the section of our code about hazardous and dangerous buildings. Um, this proposed ordinance, the vacant registration one will build on this authority and give us a more proactive, preventive tool to make our neighborhoods better.
And if I can just tag on to that specifically. You know, from my perspective, uh, there have been a few situations that I've encountered over the past few years with vacant properties in the town. I think this tax would be a nice tool to have in the toolbox because this eight point sixteen point ten that Angela included in the packet is a pretty drastic measure and a pretty challenging one to enforce. So just, you know, from legal's perspective, based on actual experience, I, I think this might be a nice thing to have.
Wait, can you repeat that? What part did you say is challenging to enforce?
So what she has in the packet here after the town's recommendation, it's eighteen point sixteen point ten hazardous and dangerous buildings. That's really the only, uh, apart from your standard, you know, grass weed ordinance. This hazardous building is really the only thing that we have to deal with a vacant property that was in a really dilapidated or dangerous condition. But what is dangerous, what is health? It's a challenge. So I, I think this would be a nice preemptive thing to have in place. So hopefully it doesn't get to that point.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, questions? I'm sure there are many.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoover.
I would agree with your statements about eight, eight, eight sixteen point one, one, eight point sixteen point zero, one, zero. We've had to deal with a few times previously, a couple, couple of properties. It's expensive.
Yeah.
In the end, it wasn't worth it. But overall, I, I, I like where this is going. I guess my first question would be though, is the registration, well, I'm not quite understanding that. So a person that's going to have a vacant property needs to register that property that it's vacant for some period of time or expected to be some period of time. I've quite found the registration expectations of the, of the property owner to register, when, when and how.
Okay, so they have like a year of grace period. So if a property becomes, you know, vacant as of July first, twenty twenty five, they have to register it by July first, twenty twenty six.
And they're registering to say it's going to be vacant for
a whole year.
Twelve months.
Twelve months.
Four months, whatever, whatever it may be. And, and then we're, we know the, there's a reason, whatever that reason is, I guess.
Right. And I guess you would also take into consideration the hardships, you know, that, that was part of the thing. But in general, yeah, that's what would apply.
And if they, and if they do not register, then what?
So there's the, I think we put like a penalty or fee for not registering, oh no, hundred fifty for late registration, but penalty for non-compliance, like we're still exploring that.
Okay, so the fact that we have the vacant property, as long as they're paying, as long as they register and they pay whatever fee that is annually or what have you for the, the period of time, then then the only responsibility then is to, is to keep the facility, the property in, in, in a state of good repair, I guess. As long as they keep it in a state of good repair, grass cut, building in good shape and all that, it would be acceptable.
Only per, I'm going to have you sit close just in case you want to pop up. Thank you.
So, so then they register for the year that I'm going to be vacant for a year. And at the end of that year, then, then if it's only good for a year, then what happens at the end of that year? They have to then occupy the property.
If it's not occupied, then we start increasing their property tax.
Okay.
And it's a mo- it's a, a motivator to get them to either rent it or sell it. So the, like the businesses on Main Street that are just empty. And if we follow similar to Frederick County, they give them, I believe it's either sixty or ninety days. Once that building goes vacant, they have six, after the sixty or ninety days that they still haven't rented it, they do need. they do need to register it. The, the year grace period is with no tax increase, we'll give them a year. The one, one of the building, you know, business on town goes out of business, they don't, they can't rent it out for whatever reason, they don't. After ninety days of being empty, they do need to register it.
To the ninety day.
Or whatever we, we come up with. I believe Frederick is, is sixty or ninety days.
And that's currently what Alicia considering or proposing that ninety days, ninety days, we're saying
And then
to register.
To register it. And then the date that they register it, there, we give them a grace period of a year where for the date. Obviously, they have to keep up the maintenance and, and things to avoid violations, but it can sit empty for, for that year. But from a year from, from that registration, if they have not rented it then, at that point, that is when we start increasing the property tax.
If I wait ninety days and register, then I have a year from that point, which really gives me fifteen months.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, that makes a little more sense. And that's kind of following what other jurisdictions are doing.
That's what I'm trying to make the sense of. Okay. And then, so then the other question I have is then, so we selected the districts here, Village Zone B one, B two. What there was four, oh, mixed use. So the mixed use, so which really is ninety percent of that's Main Street.
Correct.
A little bit of some, some of that Seaton Avenue and then I'm not sure where all B one and B two is all at right now, but there might be some scattered here and there. Why not, why not all the districts? Just a question. Is there?
I don't have an answer for that.
Is that something Frederick County does is select certain?
Yes, they, from what I read, most places, Frederick included, don't, it's just vacant, I mean, just commercial or mixed use, they're not targeting
Residential.
Purely residential, at least at this point.
If you look at the chart on page thirty-four, under applicability, that shows you what those jurisdictions apply it to. So correct, Frederick City only applies it to commercial mixed use, it doesn't apply to residential. So, yeah, I mean, other jurisdictions have tried to target this more. I'm assuming to address specific problems that those jurisdictions are facing would be my guess. But it's something to consider.
Okay, so some districts do do residential.
Yes.
But the, the proposal and the recommendation from the town, it should apply to commercial, residential, mixed use in these listed zones.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the that's my question is why not, why not to it? But of course, that's something, I guess, to be discussed.
And absolutely can be discussed in, in, in what?
I just wanted to make sure there was, there was or was not a hard rule or whatever to say.
There isn't.
This is what we wanted to be and this is why or has to be and why or whatever, but.
I mean, our primary, primary, primary objective is really trying to clean up Main Street a few places.
Okay, and since you said that, because there's at least one property on Main Street that should have been gone years and years and years ago. There's two other properties that really aren't vacant, but partially. So how does that, how does that apply when half the buildings, the main portion of the building is, is vacant, but the other parts of the building is.
Are you referring to like the storefronts vacant, but there's apartments? This is going to be targeting the storefronts. It, it just because they have rented apartments does not.
Well, you, you, you would need to, you could tailor your definition of vacant to cover that situation, if that's what you wanted to do.
That's why I bring it up, because if we're doing, you know, I got half my room occupied and half that was not occupied, how do I cut it in half?
I keep, you know, I hate to keep mentioning Frederick and trying to compare, but we are using them as a model and they target that same thing. So we can take a look at how their guidelines and ordinances are drafted and we can model that with the help of the attorneys.
One building, it's one zone, it's one.
And that's why it's listed mixed.
Owner or whatever, you know, it might be multiple names on the deed, but it's, you know, it's not a shared.
I mean, we want to get these storefronts.
Condo where we got multiple.
Right.
In this case anyway.
And, and we can word it, as the attorney said, drafted however we think. The main thing is, you know, that big empty rundown storefronts.
The obvious portion.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, that's when eight point sixteen point zero one zero may have to go into play for at least one of them.
And
I know what you're talking about.
And by building on that is our foundation, adding on to that expanding, that's going to give us more authority to act rather than dependent on getting the health inspector, the fire inspector, you know, because their hands are tied on a lot of things. And this is really going to help the situation.
I, I, I agree this will open some eyes to property owners. And, and give somewhat an incentive, cash always talks.
Oh, absolutely. Those are, we have two great storefronts right there that could be rented. And that's what we want this town to bring more business. And this also aligns with a lot of the, the Main Street program ideas and just revitalization in a whole.
So right, so like I said, like I said earlier, I mean, I like where this is going. I mean, if I was more tweaking, particularly those, those kind of properties to me. I'm not sure about the reduction of some of the zones, but that's a discussion that can be made at another time. But, you know, how do we feel about that? I mean, because residential property or what have you in some of our subdivisions, I don't think we have any issues at this point, but I don't, I don't, I don't know every, every residential property and, and, and so what they look like and all that, but what their neighbors think, more importantly.
Right.
But it certainly has an impact on any neighbor, residential or commercial of how his or her property values are diminished, or potentially diminished.
No, so future businesses that may want to come, come to town and scoping out the area.
And maybe a discourage.
Absolutely.
And it may have a, you know, a health hazard to go along with the rodents and whether they're whatever. Other than that, so I mean, I like the directions going, I think, I think there's more work to be done as far as the drafting of it, but I just think that's I think is a good direction to go.
I
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I have a few questions that somewhat relate to what Commissioner Hoover was alluding to. So it looks like the registration, it says here, registration process will create a centralized record of vacant properties. I would imagine that the town knows of some of the bigger vacant problematic properties already, but we may not know of all of them per se.
Right, and this would mainly be for future, as Nigella said that, you know, people that will not hide behind, but, but they're behind an LLC and trying to track down or to get a hold of the owner. Even with some of our businesses here, that, you know, rent their buildings, it's, it is very difficult sometimes for us to talk about a water bill or anything. This would ensure that we can contact. And if they have a resident agent, if they're not within, we discussed that, a certain amount of miles or, you know, we talked to possibly about a regis, you know, an agent, anybody that we can get a hold of, so.
So that would be part of the, the registration is to list those types of things, or is that beforehand? I'm sorry.
I think that would be part of the registration.
Okay.
And we're still working out a lot of it, a lot of it has to go through the attorney.
Sure.
But that would be part of it.
Okay, so how? Okay, so how do we know? We just rely on good faith that the property owners or the, the will come forward and, and register? Or is this going to be like one of those complaint-driven things? How, how does that work?
Most every ordinance is complaint-driven.
Right, so it would be complaint-driven.
And the, the two that we're talking about mainly, we all know. You can tell they're vacant, they've been vacant for a while. I, I think a lot of it isn't going to be hard to figure out. But between the code enforcement and staff, I mean, we can see what's vacant and then also complaint-driven as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the way it would roll out would be as much as we would hope that people would voluntarily comply, it would probably involve code enforcement going around and serving notices on what we believe are obviously vacant buildings. And then to the extent that there are not so obvious ones, that would be the more complaint-driven, neighbor-driven, like, like every other section of the code. As Commissioner Hoover mentioned.
Become eyesore, that's when they become obvious.
Right, right. There are ways to know.
So, so then you have that central repository of information, hopefully a way to contact people. You know, the clock has started, that makes the administration of the tax increases easier.
So let's say it's complaint-driven and somebody makes a complaint and it is indeed vacant. The code enforcement officer would physically go to the property and or is there, I mean, because if no one's there.
There, there are ways that, there's a process to serve a vacant property.
Okay.
I'm familiar with, with that, because we've, we've had to do it, yeah. So, so, yeah, I mean, it's both posting and to the extent that you can, you know, find an address, say for a business on, you know, Maryland Business Express, a resident agent, things like that. That, that's how it would go.
Okay.
If you get a complaint about, that is occupied or that is not occupied, the water bill will tell you. No water flow, nobody's in there.
Yeah, there, there are many ways.
Also, so once it's, let's say it's identified, once it's served, does that start the clock for them to submit their registration?
Well.
Because it says, what, ninety days you must register? Would that be ninety days from, from the notice?
That's something that we'd have to check out, but it would, would normally be unless they came to us after the ninety days of being vacant to let us know. But if not, it would be when, once we served, correct?
I think that would probably be the safest way to handle it, think about that a little bit more, but.
Typically, our notices like that come out, so you have fourteen days to correct the action.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
And then maybe from that point.
Probably stays centered at that, if you've got a, if you've got a notice that something's wrong, normally you have, I think it's fourteen days.
Yeah.
Fourteen days to, to, to.
And then after that fourteen days, that we would start the.
So then you'd have fourteen days to come and make your.
Either rent it or register it.
And that'd be consistent throughout the ordinance, then stick with that.
Okay, was the recommendation somehow I wrote down ninety days must register?
I believe.
That's the volunteer.
Oh, volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, when, when you know your property is going to be vacant.
Okay, and then as far as and that's, this isn't a question for tonight to figure out, but something to consider. Because looking up at like City of Frederick, where it has vacant property registration average about one hundred and twenty dollars annually. Failure to register vacant property, this one is, I know we don't have that outlined yet, a thousand dollars penalty each day the property is not registered. And we have it broken down to a hundred dollar annual on-time registration and a hundred and fifty late registration. What would constitute late registration?
If.
I, I guess, let me rephrase my question. So I guess I'm looking for where late registration separates from non-compliance.
I would say wherever, again, this is all theoretical, because we haven't written it yet, right? But I would say that it's whatever time period you designate for them to register.
Okay.
That's on time. If they are anywhere past that date, it's a late registration, which means they have to pay an additional fee.
Okay.
So if we gave them the, let's say the fourteen day notice, like hello, Mr. Smith. We notice your building is vacant, you know, you have fourteen days to either register, rent it, sell it, whatever. And then from that, at that fourteen day mark would be, okay, well, you, you have, we would have to figure that out. Do you still have the ninety days or sixty days, or does it start from there? So those are the little.
Yeah, so I just.
But it's going to be that sort of process.
You'd have to wait out that full ninety days to send him a letter.
Yeah.
Because he's got ninety days.
Right, so we give him the fourteen days notice, then he has the ninety days. So it does give them ample time, you know, to do something.
Right, you wind up with what, nine, a hundred and four days.
So does, does Fred, the City of Frederick outline how long they have to get their registration in? I'm just wondering how we would.
Thirty days.
Oh, thirty days, okay. Okay, is that after the one year? Because I'm allowed to leave it vacant for one year. Without. And then do I have ninety days to register?
You, you still have to register it, but that, that one year, if.
If I think it's going to be, like I vacate, my tenants move out and I don't, to me, it's not going to be vacant. I'm planning on renting it in the next six months, so I'm not going to register it.
That's your ninety day window then to try and rent it out. If it doesn't happen, then you register, if I understand right, you didn't register it within that ninety day period, then you have a year of being unoccupied.
Before your.
Without any taxes. And, and this, this ordinance or this code isn't really, I mean, it's going to apply to somebody renting out your house or your room. But most of those cases, they're going to be rented out. This is really to push for the vacant buildings. I mean, it's, it's going to help all around, but you know, like if you move and you're going to keep your house, chances are you are going to rent it, you're going to try to rent it. You, you know, you'll have that ninety days, if it's not rented, then you register it. And then from there, the year, we won't, there's no extra taxes. But if after a year from the date you register it, if it's still sitting empty, nothing, that's when the vacant property tax will kick in. We give you a year of vacancy.
And you could build in some hardship exceptions to that, like for example, if a property is vacant because the owner passes away and the estate administration is an issue and a challenge. I could see a situation where that might not be a reason, you know, it might be reasonable to give an estate some slack to deal with their issues.
I think we'd also want to add like renovation, if somebody's going to renovate the whole thing.
Sure.
Right, things like that. But what would apply is if you rented your, you know, you, you couldn't get anybody to rent for whatever reason or the house was in probate because of the death, you would still be required though to keep the upkeep, upkeep on it. You can't just let it become overgrown and fallen down. But as far as the tax, the taxes, the additional vacant tax, we will have hardship clauses and you do have a year. We're giving everybody a year, you know, one of the businesses on town, when they get it registered, even though we know it's been vacant for ten years, we're, they're going to have a year to get that rented, sold or whatnot before the vacant tax increase goes into effect.
Okay. But you said, I'm sorry, even if it was vacant for a year, they would still have to keep up on maintenance and that sort of thing. Where does this policy or eight sixteen oh ten address that portion of it? Or does that go back to our code for maintaining a property?
It would go back to the code, but also we're going to have it, I think, a little bit more teeth.
Yeah.
To enforce it.
So I think, and I, I, I didn't, I didn't draft this portion, but I, I think what's in here is also that there's going to be kind of standards of maintenance for vacant properties that go into maybe more detail than our current code provisions provide.
And we do, oh, I'm sorry.
So that would be added?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's sort of a policy and maybe that, that's a policy that gets given to folks when they register. So like here, here are expectations of how this is going to be maintained.
All these jurisdictions have an actual checklist that they give. It'll say the grass, the egresses, I mean, everything is covered in the checklist.
So we're not just relying on our grass ordinance or our hazardous building ordinance. We have some additional things.
An actual specific list.
Yeah.
Okay, and is that, well, that, that sounds like it won't be as hard to enforce as the dangerous building then, because it's pretty clear if you're not moving your lawn. Right, okay. Okay, then. So, and I read in here that the money collected would go towards funding all the work that goes into.
Correct.
It's kind of like, okay, to, to making sure that this happens. And then I do like the idea of the standard of maintenance. There was another question I had and I just, oh, so again, not something for tonight, but to consider, let's say, when this, if and when it does go through, how we would alert property owners to make, to make them aware of this change? Because we know it's always been a struggle trying to get people to read newsletters or follow on social media, but, but it looks like you, you have some of the grace periods built in anyway, within the, within this, knowing that they have so many days to respond to. And there's a good faith effort of the town trying to alert us, okay.
Yeah, you know, we, we're not going to go after the juggler either, you know, we know we have vacant property. So if this would pass, we would probably right away, if it's, we can legally do that, notify the vacant, the owners that, hey, your property is vacant and there's a, here's a new ordinance, you might want to look at this. So, whatever.
Yeah, no, I mean, we should certainly not provide as much notice as, as possible.
Okay. Additional questions, comments?
I think it's a great start, it's just, I want to make sure we get the language for that mixed use in there, because I think that's going to be a tripping.
I think it's a great start. It's just, I want to make sure we get the language for that mixed use in there, because I think that's gonna be a tripping point, you know, and that's really what we're aiming at. Is those mixed use buildings.
I have some questions and concerns, and I'll try to keep it short. The first question, how many vacant properties do we have? Do we know, like, is there like five on Main Street? Or are we looking at, you mentioned two.
Oh.
Roughly ten, twenty?
We're actually putting together like a spreadsheet to figure that out, how many vacant properties, and that'll depend on, you know, like you said, water. Meter readings or seeing things on as that, where you can see there's a primary residence or not, things like that.
I can think of three right off the top of my head on Main Street, yeah. That's what I know of.
Are they all commercial?
No.
No. And then I had the same question as Commissioner. I think it was you, Jim. Why not all residential and zoning districts? I guess I have a problem with targeting. The residents in the village zone. If there are other. Light and safety hazards around town. I just, I I think it's either all or none. I don't want to just target the people who live on Main or work on Main Street. The third thing I'm concerned about is over taxation. Basically, if I own an empty building or my property, my house is empty for a year. I'm gonna have to pay twice the amount of property tax.
That's.
Two years is gonna be three times the amount.
It would be after the one year, yeah, not starting that first year, right?
Yeah, you get a year.
It's empty for one year, then the two, then the double property tax kicks in.
Correct.
It's vacant for two years, and I have to pay three times the amount of property.
And it goes up to five.
It might be that I can't rent rent my building because it requires too much, too many repairs.
Then you could sell it.
Can't afford it.
You could sell it.
I I maybe I can't get a buyer. Maybe it's a crappy property and I can't get a buyer.
And that's why we.
So I'm just saying, the these are just concerns. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I think the one thousand penalty is extremely high.
That was from Frederick.
He doesn't, I'm assuming that Thermont, Tawnytown, Woodsboro, Mount Airy, none of them have this sort of policy. Because the ones on the flow chart, Brunswick, within the rest, Forest Heights, Laurel, Seat Pleasant. Tacoma Park, Upper Marlboro.
These are just the ones that that we know of, that we were able to put together. I don't believe Thermont.
So I'm concerned about the impact on the low income owners who can't afford to fix up the property in order to sell it. Or if you're a homeowner, you have a home on Main Street and you just can't afford to fix it up. It's my property. I don't want to be forced to sell it necessarily. You know, since COVID, we've had a lot of business closures. That little, where the, where they now make the fire department stuff in the corner. Where on on the corner, the town's town square. A business, yeah, a business came, the smoothie shop came in there, but they couldn't maintain, they couldn't get enough customers, so they closed quickly. So sometimes it's the economy that brings businesses or people into town who are looking to buy property. You know, I think the administrative burden is gonna be great for the town. I think it's gonna be a huge burden. You know, I don't think we've detailed the hardship exemptions in detail. I think we need to clarify the definition of of vacant, and we've talked about that, you know, whether it be ninety days or. I don't know, could we limit the penalty escalation to properties vacant longer than two to three years? You know, could we have other considerations? Cap the total tax impact, so it's not cumulative, two times the property tax, then three, then four. Clarify the appeals process. I I think overall, I think it's. I think it's a hardship on low income residents. So I want to make sure that we don't burden. Our residents and business owners more than they're already burdened.
If you would, I mean, obviously, this is a very early phases, we're, you know, putting this together. What if it was just the commercial mixed uses?
That was something I was gonna ask. I mean, is it, is, we could always consider as a council, starting with commercial and mixed use potentially. And then adding on residential if it becomes a bigger.
If it becomes a problem.
Yeah.
And the maintenance standards, I think that's great, because we've needed those for a long time. But the maintenance standards should apply to any property in town, not just vacant properties.
It should.
Because if we had maintenance standards that had to be met, those vacant properties on Main Street would already look better than they do now. So I don't know if we need to tighten up code eight sixteen oh ten, or. Add maintenance standards to that, and I don't know how enforceable it is. What if we, well, I guess we could have code violations, right, for maintenance standards?
Right, and that's, that's what it is now. Grass and weeds mainly, there's a filth and rubbish one that captures some things. There could be more. There certainly could be more.
And I think the point of this is to have, you know, like you said, a repository of information about these properties. And it'll be part of like the Main Street revitalization, because we get calls from business owners and developers asking if there are vacant properties. On Main Street where they can open up a business, and we have, like, for the past few calls, like, I haven't had the answer because I didn't know. So having this information, even for residential, would be very helpful. And with residential, like, you can. Find out like different opportunities for development. That's one, one reason why you should like register it as well. Yeah.
I I will tell you, just for for my little storefront, I have a waiting list of five people. There are people wanting to come to Emmitsburg. And so it's, we need to do something.
Rent a business?
Yes.
Storefront?
Yes.
Is the downstairs occupied? Is it the old State Farm building?
Yes.
Is the downstairs currently occupied?
Yes.
It is. Oh, because the windows are covered, so I just assumed it was vacant.
Yeah, no, 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 it's a, it's a safety supply place, National Safety is in there. And I think with his inventory, he kind of likes to keep, keep it closed.
Yeah.
So people can't see exactly what he has in there, but storefronts, we have a list of people waiting to come down this part.
I think this was already covered, and forgive me, I'm gonna ask you again. Does this apply if. The building has one section that's occupied but not the other, and let's just say, uh, commercial?
My my intention would be, and I hope, you know, it's gonna be up to to Clark to see how we can do it legally, but. Partial, especially those storefronts. So of course, if you did their taxes, you'd have to do a, a percentage of what part of the building would be vacant. Is what I'm hoping we can do. That that was my intention when we started this, and I will tell you. I got this idea from Brunswick, downtown Brunswick, Old Town Brunswick was was vacant. It was, it was, it was scary to drive through there. And see all the vacant storefronts, and you go down there now, and it is just, it's vibrant. The stores are open, it's, it's amazing what what this did. For for downtown.
And same with Frederick, there are parts of Frederick that they love this program. It it's really helped with bringing in new businesses. And cleaning up the rundown buildings that a lot of owners, I'm not saying our owners in town, but a lot of owners. Will use the vacant building as a really nice tax write-off. They have property that's not being used. Because it's easier than fixing it up to do other things, and that is happening. So that's another, yeah, Brunswick and Frederick both have benefited.
I know that the town for years has struggled with certain vacant commercial. Plots that would be great if somebody could buy it, if it was up for sale, or if something was done with it. And then on top of that, there's usually very little. Recourse that the town has in that case. So. He really kind of, as much as we want to. Bring in the businesses and clean up Main Street, people who have vacant properties for ten, fifteen or more years. Have been sitting there, and it's a big old pillar on our street. We don't, we don't have, we don't really have any recourse right now.
No, we don't, and and two of the properties that are vacant, I personally made contacts with the owners. And, you know, told them, look, I I got people that can rent your building, what, you know, will you sell this thing, will you, and they're just not interested, so they're. You know, that must.
Yeah, they know people either want to rent it or buy it, and. Even before we opened our business, we reached out to these people that the mayor is referring to, personally spoke to them. Leaving it vacant or for storage. That's, it's a problem.
Uh, very active businesses.
Yeah.
One grocery store, radio shop.
Yeah.
Restaurant, I mean, they were, they all worked out well before. It'd be nice to have that.
Yeah.
There you go, be a problem with, because they're not vacant.
Yeah.
So they're gonna be something to figure out how and how, and can you deal with that? I'm not sure how you deal with it.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Clark.
Oh, no, I just, I I agree that it's gonna be a challenge, but I, I'll do what I can, if that's what you would like me to do.
Few years ago, you had three of them, identical situations.
I noticed on here, it says annual vacant property inspection, seventy-five per inspection per property. I I think we, if we're gonna pass something that requires an inspection, we need to qualify what those. How how does it get certified? What are we looking at?
Well, I think those are the maintenance standards.
But like, I know for our rental registration program, we talked about it being up to code. What would his inspection? What would he be looking for exactly? My maintenance could be peeling paint or broken windows.
No.
But in terms of wiring or egress.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be the mainly the safety issues. It's not going to be. I mean, some cosmetic, of course, but if we follow what Brunswick or Frederick and. Apologize, I didn't put any of their forms in here, but they have a checklist what the inspector goes and and looks for. And it is for safe plumbing, egresses, electrical wires.
So that would be done during Andrew's inspection?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that needs to be part of the ordinance, if that's what we're gonna do.
Oh, absolutely, it should, yeah.
Yeah, and this is.
Maybe we should look at Brunswick's plan in detail and. Maybe it would make more sense.
So it sounds like there's a lot of things that the council would like to pursue as far as options. From, correct me if I'm wrong, we heard, you know, maybe we can bat around the idea of making it commercial and mixed use. And adding on residential later, if that would be easy enough to determine at the time, I would imagine. You know, how do we deal with partially vacant properties? What what do the standards of maintenance look like? Building in the hardships and exceptions, looking to see what what those things might be. The definition of vacant, how do we alert property owners? And then the whole, the difference between, you know, late registration versus noncompliance. You know, maybe it's just a matter of putting in a deadline for each step. And then the other idea I had, and and this may be us, maybe we do not want to go in this direction, just a thought, I know. Actually, never mind. If we don't have residential in the mix, I was, it wouldn't be, it would be a moot point, but if we have residential in the mix. Didn't know if there was some way we could give them pamphlet of resources to help, to refer them to. Not that we pursue all of that for them, but hey, if you need help, here are some community resources or county or state resources. And that's, I'm thinking more residential, but it may not be the point. And then, you know, and we can always. Determine as a council, we see the the recommendation for the tax rate or their tax increase. I don't know that we're looking for something different on that, because that's something we can determine. Here, if we agree or want it to be different, but do, does that give enough direction for it to come back to the board?
All right.
I I think so. If if, if you would like to pursue this. I think it probably would be sensible sensible to drafts of proposed ordinance, proposed regulation, you know, kind of. Lay it all out there and then bring it to you, and you can redline what you like.
Okay.
Keep what you like.
Okay.
Probably workshop, I don't know. I I I think that.
There's enough.
I can get us started if that's what we want to do.
So then, coming back to council, is there interest in pursuing to look into more?
I still have, I still have an interest in seeing this, you know, at least drafted, pursuit, pursuit, you know. Proceed with the drafting of a, of a, of a draft ordinance, and probably have two or three runs at it. With a workshop or two or three, I don't want to rush into it and come up with something that, six months from now, we're.
Change.
We're regretting.
I agree.
But probably go through a couple.
Downgrade or whatever we want to do with it.
Commissioner Turnquist and Commissioner Hagan, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd like to move forward.
Okay.
Um, with it, and think more about starting with commercial. And those maintenance standards are gonna be really important, and kind of see how it goes, see if we can work, have all the kinks worked out. But yeah, definitely another draft would be great.
And I think, I think I, correct me if I if I missed one of the things we wanted to maybe see more of. Did I miss anything in the summary of maybe to look for more detail in the in the next draft?
Okay, absolutely.
Probably have to play it back. I don't have it written now in the list. Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, all right. Any other questions?
The only other comment I have then is, while while you're drafting that, this, for the attorney, this code eighteen point six, I'm sorry. Eight point sixteen point zero one zero hazards, maybe take a peek at that, look at that to see, is there any suggestions on how to tweak that to make that a more. Opt, you know, a more broader option for us in other, in other, other scenarios unrelated to that.
I think that's a good idea.
That's a great idea. And I just want to commend whoever had larger font. I could read it without my glasses, so thank you.
That was me.
Thank you.
Because I can't see there.
I can, thank you. That's nice. All in favor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, good discussion. Okay, next, we're considering expiration time period for recordation of final plots following final subdivision plan approval. Staff is going to provide, so is this just for discussion or no? It says consideration, so I assume this, we could possibly vote on this. I'm just trying to determine if we need a motion. Bring it to discussion. I thought it was just discussion.
Yeah, I I don't think this was meant to be. I know it says consider, but.
It's probably just discussion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Okay.
There's anything to vote on at this point. It's a discussion.
Perfect.
More representation.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
More of a presentation.
Sounds good.
So at a previous meeting, the board requested additional information about subdivision plaque recording. And asked for examples of how other municipalities in Frederick County handle the process. So we reached out to towns across the county. Gathered information on subdivision plaque procedures, then time limits and recordation rules and requirements. And we kind of compiled them in this PowerPoint. So if you want to go to the next slide. So as you know, subdivision plans, they're required, as a required part of the development process, as they define new laws. And right, the rights of way and the establishments and layout infrastructure, et cetera. And they have to be recorded with the county before any transfer of property or. Any type of development, which obviously protects public interest and. Triggers the developer's obligation to complete any public improvements or any other development. So before, next slide is, the next. So before, uh, next slide is uh the next um. Before we get into what other municipalities they're doing, I kind of want to go over what uh we do right now. So for phase subdivisions, uh, we require a preliminary plaque, which has to be approved by the planning commission. And it's valid for three years. And um, the final plaits after that would have to confirm to approve the preliminary plaque. And those are also valid for three years. And then once a final plaque is approved by the planning commission, it has to be recorded by the by uh, well, it has to be recorded with the county court. Before any permits can be issued. Um, so we can look at, I believe Frederick's next. So the city of Frederick, uh, their requirements vary based on the size of the subdivision. So for minor subdivisions, which is four lots or fewer. Developers can simply just submit a final plaque which the city records. They they just recorded shortly after approval. And for major um subdivisions, more than four lots, the process is more involved. Uh, includes a sketch plan, preliminary flat, final flat. And the time limits for recordation depends on whether the subdivision is phased or how it is it is phased. So for a base subdivision, um, the final plaque. Including at least twenty-five percent of the lots must be recorded within two years of preliminary plaque approval. Developers are then allowed to um get an additional year per phase for. Any other like subsequent recordings. And subdivision without facing, um, the final plaque is uh. Valid for at least for file platform at least twenty-five percent of the lots. They have to be recorded within two years of preliminary plan approval. And um, the city also allows a single six-month extension at the staff level. But any additional extensions have to be uh approved by the planning commission. And any A P F O uh requirements they have. The for a subdivision to expire any portion of the preliminary plat that hasn't been recorded. If they P F O uh expires, so does the final plat as well. And um, a few other municipalities, I think the next slide Brunswick. Um, their plaits don't expire unless they're changed. Um, their site plans and improvement plans do expire. Um, they have expression timelines. In Middletown, um, plant plaits must be acted upon within thirty days and the town handles recordation immediately after approval. Uh, Mount Area allows twelve months to record. The final plaque before it expires and once recorded, developers have twenty-four months to obtain any building permits. And Myersville, they also noted that they record the plaits as soon as they're approved and um that. The town does it as opposed to the developer. And in Thurmont, uh, preliminary plaits have a two-year time limit, but there's no expiration date for final plaits. Walkersville has a two-year time limit on preliminary plaits with the option to extend for an additional year. And if the plaque is conditionally approved, it has to be resubmitted within sixty days. Otherwise, the approval is void. And before um, the final plaque recordation in Walkersville, deeds of easement must be recorded and referenced in the plaque. And improvement plans must be signed and associated surety for public improvements. They also have to be in place. And then the county also has their own rules. You know, the next slide. The preliminary plaits are valid uh five years from the uh planning. From the day of the planning commission approval or A P F O. Uh, adequate public facilities ordinance expiration, whichever comes first. And uh combined preliminary plaits and final plaits are uh valid for five years from the date of approval. And then an unrecorded final plaque becomes void after um. Either three days, three, sorry, three years after its submission date, or if it's not recorded before the preliminary plan expires. Um, then it, whichever comes first gets um, that's when the plan expires. Uh, so I guess the main purpose of this presentation is to give some examples of um. Other municipalities to help guide our own policies. Because we don't want to, we we want to prevent approved plans from lingering indefinitely and avoid any situations where. Uh, infrastructure capacity is no longer adequate by the time development occurs. Um, Clark, if you have any to add.
Not not at this time, but happy to contribute where I can.
All right, so my question would be this. So so we got the presentation. I remember some of it. Uh, but so then the goal then, I mean, we got the presentation is then staff going to come back with or town attorney will come back with a. With a a policy or an ordinance of what the staff and the Julia, I guess, probably mostly you. Are going to recommend for the council to review and consider what's the right timeframe for expirations?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I.
If that's what we want, I guess.
I guess that, yeah, that I turn it back to you respectfully. What um, what would you like to see? I I think, you know, we've. We have what's in place, which is three years and three years preliminary final. These are what some other municipalities are doing. What? Do you, is this something the council would like to reconsider or what? Where do you want to go from here?
Well, I guess my first thing is where where the staff brought us here, so they they must have an opinion that it needs to be changed or should be changed or something, I'm assuming. Um, if that's the case, then I would guess I'd be looking for then the staff's recommendations or proposals of. Where we should go and based on what we just seen and what we have, you know, why, you know, um, but. I'm open to it. I just want to know more clarity of of maybe maybe again a draft ordinance says. You know, changing our ordinances, I guess, of where 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 we should now update. To be more time, less time than we currently have and. Then I'm I I I personally be looking for status recommendation because at the end of the day, that's who's going to deal with it, you know, but.
Right, so we would recommend reducing the time limit. Because um, you don't want a development to like. Not take place. If you if you if this, if the time period is three years, that's too long and developer can. Just not do anything and our infrastructure could change by then.
So how does that affect for actual selling the property? So so you have a developer, we have a developer come to town now. It's going to start developing Emmett Ridge. He does, he gets his site plans, he gets all that approved, but the lots don't sell for that, whatever that timeframe we'd come up with. That doesn't have any effect on his or does it when his final final plaque? For him to record or does he have to extend that until he sells all the properties, all the lots?
He he can't sell anything until the final plaque is recorded.
Okay.
So this is, this is before that.
Okay.
Before we get to sale, this is.
So we're getting to where he can make his first sale.
Right.
Okay.
Because that that is the precondition to. Yeah.
So we want him to get to this spot closure so he makes his first sale.
Yes.
And of course, after that, her continue to make other sales hopefully, but but if it linger, his sales linger on for an extended amount. As they did it, they did it Brookfield.
That that would not be impacted by what we're looking at.
Okay. Then I'm good with pretty good, probably be good with whatever you recommend though.
Yeah, I think, I'm I'm sorry, the other, the other attorney was here one evening and this came up and she she told us. That Emmett'sburg allows three years, which she thought was too long. So we had one of the commissioners, well, I guess the president had asked, could you bring information back to us? And that's why it's coming before us now.
Right, that that's what I thought. So.
Yeah, I think it was in relation to the adequate public facilities. Because since things can linger for so long, it's possible the school, for example, might be in a very different state by that time. So.
That's correct.
Yeah, my.
You're right. It was during that discussion that she brought it up.
And that that makes sense.
Right, so and um, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Sweeney.
I just want to know if staff has a recommended time that they would like to have. But you want one year, do you want two years?
I believe two years, but um, we can explore that a bit more. Yeah.
I I also, just based on experience and. The the data that you were presented with tonight, I think two is a reasonable place to move to. Particularly for the preliminary plat. And for the final as well. I mean, really. What what we're talking about for final plaits is. If a final plaque is approved unconditionally. And then not recorded for up to three years, there's really no need for that to be the case because you have. You have your final plan, so why is, why is it just hanging out there? Now, there are cer- certain circumstances where a final plaque is. You know, conditionally approved, right? And so that it may make some sense to give time for the those conditions to be met. Before it's recorded, but generally speaking, I think at least on the final plaque, three years is a pretty long time.
I have a question.
Yes.
Emmett Ridge two was, Emmett Ridge two was already plotted once or the final plot. Plaid had to be entered in and it only got ten houses built on it, so um, why? Wasn't the three years, they they had, after three years, they can't build anymore? Is that what it was?
Right, it was approved in nineteen ninety-five by the planning commission and it was never recorded, so then became void.
Okay, but they sold three house, ten one, ten houses or fifteen.
For what they're calling first fa- phase one, yeah, they're twelve hours. But but they never extended their 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 phases. They they never paid their annual fees or whatever to get to extend that. That that approval. So they lost it.
Right.
So what in the case of Southgate, I know there's still some empty. I don't know, I think maybe we're down to two now. I mean, those started going up, what, twenty?
But but all that was done, that's just a lot. They're just trying to sell lots and that's what what Clark was saying a minute ago, said you're down to sales now, so it could be.
Okay.
Take it another twenty years of those three lots and.
Right. So I mean, I, this may be a, probably is a completely separate issue. So because like. Frederic County, it says phase subdivision, a final plaque with at least twenty-five percent of lots must be filled within two years. A preliminary. Flat approval. So do we have anything? And I don't, this is probably a stupid question. Is there anything in place right now for phased um subdivisions that? We don't go on to a phase two if if we can't fill up phase one? Because it seems kind of. Why start a new project when you haven't, why have dessert when you haven't eaten your turn yet?
Well, and and houses, and houses, you may have sections one and two or whatever, three and four. In.
And lots.
Sold sold together, which may be phases one, two, or three, or four, whatever. They may be more, so there may be multiple phases. Being sold at the same time. Now, I think I think Southgate was only one phase. I don't think it was other phase otherwise.
No, yeah, no, because I think there was a moratorium on building.
There was.
So, all right, so I didn't know if that's something that is normally not an issue. Is that? Yeah, let me put it this way. Are there any? Counties, towns that do make it mandatory to finish one phase before go selling and moving on to a second? Or is that not a thing? I don't know.
I'm sure there's somebody that does.
Yeah, I I mean, the the problem with that, think about a phase one would be single family home, phase two would be town houses. Phase three could be senior housing. They could all be running simultaneously.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay, that that puts it into perspective. Thank you.
Because Brookfield's on their final phase, right, correct? Now.
Yeah.
So I think we'd have to look at the provisions that are in the current ordinance.
Yeah.
Because it's going to go into detail other than, you know, the validity of how many years before you have to. I'm sure there's a lot more to the ordinance than that.
There is. Yeah.
So. I know. It sounds to me like having three years and three years isn't necessarily beneficial for the town. There's no benefit for us right now to have it three and three? Or is there some benefit there? Like, is it one of these? You're trading something, if you shorten it, then pros and cons each way, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask.
Sounds like if you're shorting it, you're not losing anything. I mean, the the only thing you can do is gain.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're talking about the approvals there. It's the filing. Why after you got it approved, you're waiting three years to file?
Because, yeah, because, I mean, I think that's how it came up with Leslie was with the adequate public facilities. By the time it gets there, it's like. Things could have drastically changed.
The goal is to push the quarter along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I agree with two years. I think we should move it back to two years.
Is there anything that could backfire by shortening it that I'm not aware of?
I mean, you do see, you know, in some of these you look and there are provisions, more so again for the preliminary side where. Oh, you, it's two years, but you can ask for a six-month extension or various ways, because conceivably. Something could happen between preliminary and final where it might be reasonable to give the developer more time to do what they have to do, right? So you could, you could build something like that, and I think that would might be a a reasonable thing to do as well. Um, I think actually most. I think most of the jurisdictions that we're looking at have something like that. I know at least the city of Frederick, I know Walkersville. But.
I don't mind that provision, but I do think it has to be restricted.
Merited, yeah.
It has to be merited, it has to be restricted.
Free six months.
You just can't say, well, you know. Developer comes in and cries poor mouth and says, you know, I need this and he wants a one-year, two-year, three-year extension, one or two, three times and. You know, but I think it has to be.
I agree.
You know, where the control is in the ordinance.
Right.
That they have to, that meet that and you can only, and you're limited to how many, how long and how much approval you, extension you can give.
Yeah, the exception shouldn't swallow the rule. I agree with you completely.
So we could have that all outlined ahead of time and decide what. Is it necessary to? Never mind. I think that answer, I answer my own question. Questions, comments?
I'd like to see him again, come back with another ordinance for for review, consider for discussion.
I'm interested in seeing it come back with additional details as well and what that would, what that would look like.
Because I see it drafted out as what we would take out or change or what have you, then it then I'll be able to. Interpret it better for me anyway.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I I'm interested in seeing is I don't want to see, you know, the planning commission approves something. It goes through and then we're waiting years and years for it to be filed. It's just going to bite us, so we gotta tighten it up.
Yeah, I would like to see what the town. Uh, suggest in terms, it sounds like it's going to be two years, but if there's any other suggestions for the ordinance would be great.
Okay, so it sounds like we have consensus or direction to move forward because we want to see additional details. Is there anything else that's needed from us at this time?
I understand.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Okay. Okay, so we um are postponing agenda item number four for the community garden and moving on to agenda item. Number five, review commissioners, discussion to review commissioners priorities list. I I believe we have that printed in our agenda, starting on page forty-one. Is there? How do we start this off? Is there? Because I don't want to go through it line by line, but is there like a an update on where we are? I'm sorry. Go.
Um, I can, I can get through pretty quick.
Sure.
Let everybody know. Uh, infrastructure, well, that's kind of broke down into the other things. The water line for the reservoir, we're still, uh, that's a ten million dollar project. We're still trying to secure funding and uh. Uh, for that, uh, the sewer line relined, uh, right now, they're doing the cammering of all sewer lines in the whole town. To find out where we're getting the infiltration of water. Pump station is complete. Uh, completion of the Paul Street Water Line is done. They're working on the sewer line now. And the North Seaton project, uh, I think of the pre bid. Is, yeah, in September, I believe. Yeah, so that's, that's, we're working on that right now. Uh, Emmett Ridge uh, development, the Julia, where are they on that one?
Uh, they have to submit updated um subdivision plan.
Uh, water rates, of course, you know what's going on there, water capacity. We have a study in progress now. To uh, see if uh, what capacities, uh, if the capacity in our wells have changed and if we can get any more fee uh taps. Uh, tap fee structure, that's something that the board has on the uh. The horizon there to take a, take a look at that stuff, uh, review and update charter and codes. We're doing that. Like, uh, as we get time, so we're bringing those to you at a, at a slow pace. Uh, legacy grants, there's nothing new on that, right, now, Julia?
Me legacy grants.
Legacy, legacy grants and low income residents, nothing new on that, of the dark sky committee, there was a committee, but they're, they are. Not active at this time, so that's kind of went away, MS teams, I have no idea what that is.
I actually don't know either.
Is that Microsoft Teams, like?
Yeah, I I think that was mine.
Oh, okay. I still can't tell you where we are with that.
Uh, we we do have.
We, yeah, I knew that, yes.
Oh.
I used it this afternoon, I forgot. Um. The website updates, uh, we're, we're doing a better job on on the, with the websites, uh, the budget review started earlier, vacant buildings, we talked about today. Uh, we have done, uh, some updates to our learning system with the residents. Uh, now we just got to get them to keep them turned on. Uh, request to change advisory, citizen advisory name, I don't think anything's happened there, making use of glass paints, somebody help me with that.
That one was at the out front of the sheriff's office. And in the lobby.
Okay. Well, we're kind of working.
Well, no, in the lot, I'm sorry, sheriff's office.
Okay. Okay, well, the, we're upgrading that as we speak. About the stormwater management fee, that's already taken place, uh, future development annexations. Uh, that was kind of in the comprehensive plan, water and sewer contracts. Um.
I think we wanted to see those, but I think that we can take that off the list now.
Okay. Beef up water and sewer reports, I think we did that, is anybody have anything that wants to add to that, are we good?
We expanded the treasure.
Okay, expand treasures report, we did that, uh, looking at duties for each employees, uh, that's on our agenda, that's that's coming. Uh, crossing guards, uh, we're still reaching out to the the county, that's all, the sheriff's department, not getting much response with that. Uh. Non-residents own committees, that's happened. Uh, affordable housing. I wish I had something good to tell you, uh, childcare, we do have the. Childcare opened up back downstairs. So that did happen, senior housing, same thing, I don't have much to tell you about that. Uh, community placing. Uh. Other than what our deputies are doing and how we're trying to to get a little bit of overtime to handle. Uh, problem tons, that's about all I got for you on that. Review comp plan, that's done, that's ready to go, town meets obligations.
I don't know what that is.
I don't either.
I don't either, can we cross?
Done. How about the?
We did it, yeah.
Uh, North Seaton flooding issues, that should happen with um. The uh, North Seaton. Green Street Plan. Parking near. Square, well, maybe we'll have something to report next month. County to replace elementary school, we know where we are on that. Uh, expansive trails, uh. Yes, we did, and. We are working on some other uh, grants and things for some additional things that might happen. At in the Scott Road area. Uh, so the green turn signal to square, we're still fighting the county or state highway on that, uh. They still say there's no backup. I haven't. Crosswalk to town office, we're good with that, right? Minutes and agendas, we're getting closer. Cedar Avenue flooding, that should have been taken care of, right?
Yes.
Farmers Market, we're moving along. Uh, the lead line, we had to report last month, and the dam inspection, we got the catwalk replaced, and we're. Uh, waiting to uh, finish the other stuff at the dam.
That was rapid fire.
Right.
That's well done. Um.
No, we have more work to do, that's.
Um, sorry. We do have a list from staff, if that's something you want to. Is it's not, but I I just jotted some down, what?
Uh, an additional list?
Yeah, if if you want to discuss any anything from staff level, like if there's anything. You want to hear from us in terms of priorities, like, just let me know.
Um. Yeah. I mean. We can clean. Yeah, that works, that works, yes. And um. Yeah, are there, I know there were some on here that we have Ms. Brandy working on already, is there anything that? Is in progress that she could help out with? I know that it was a. Something we had talked about. Okay. Um, no, I, well. No, I I have questions about a few of these, but I don't want to go through everything line by line, so I'm wondering if it's just best. In an email. Okay.
If you do that, then I can send you something else, send everybody something else, B C C.
That works.
Don't do it. No. I was just kidding. Yeah, that's good, that's fine.
B C C.
B C C, yeah.
B C C works.
No reply, oh.
Fail safe with B C C. Yeah, I I mean, I guess, um, yeah, if we have some suggestions or specific questions, we could just put those in an email and, okay. Anyone else?
Can I just say a few words? I know it's late, everybody wants to go home. Um. I I kind of keep my own list, um, similar to that one. Of things that we've talked about and that are supposed to come back around for us to discuss again. Like, for instance, the solar field. Um, we talked about reviewing our maintenance fees, our impact fees. Um. And MS teams, I don't know if the commissioners could get access to Microsoft Teams. But you could literally set up a folder, we don't have, the commissioners don't need to see everything that you see, but you could set up a team just for the commissioners, if we have access to it. Uh, and the priority list could be maintained on teams, we could go to it at any time and and view it. Um. If no one minds, I'd like to take a stab at updating it to include like. A person responsible, when was the project started, when was the project completed? Uh, where is it in terms of priority? What is infrastructure versus? Staffing or ordinances, you know, to kind of give it some separation. Um, in terms of the project type. Is that too much? Or would that be helpful?
Think there may be a problem with teams, because everybody can be ordered at the same time, working at at the same time. That that becomes a problem with open meetings. That's the reason why they just said the B C C when you're in your email, so if you had a teams.
Well, it could be view only.
If it was view only for the for the council or whatever, then 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 it's just view, it wouldn't matter, but. If you have it to where it's active for everybody. And you, because there's no control of who could be on it. And everybody could be on it one time. Doing their own thing or whatever.
Right, right, if we have edit rights.
You could then be a violation of the Open Meeting Act.
Right, so it could be a view only. But is there any interest in organizing it? In some sort of fashion that makes sense?
I. I think a view only folder, even just of all the digital attachments that we get via email would be great. As you only saw us all in one place for us to to see. Rather than. All over the place.
I would agree, for the items that we already see and we get, agenda items and things of that nature, then I would agree, I mean, the rest of it is just, I don't, I don't, I don't want to get a. I guess, I don't, I don't need to get a, uh, all the documents or anything the town staff deals with daily, every day and whatever.
Right, no, I don't want to see that.
Need it, nor do I want to see it, or do I want to be be expected to do something with it? Uh, but if it's something for these kind of documents that we're going to get, and they're in a package that we have. That kind of access to it. 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 I don't know if it'd help me or not, I think it's not gonna hurt me, but I don't know if it's gonna truly help me.
It would help, it would help me.
Here's my concern, somebody that lives on teams right now is if we have a team for all the commissioners, there's. Glaring the Opens Meetings Act. If discussions occur online.
Well, no, no discussions.
We're just talking about a share.
Only document.
Yeah, I I think that what if what we're proposing is view only, I I think that's fine. As long as there's not discussion correspondence of a quorum of commissioners, that's where you get into an open meeting next.
I know what you mean, because we just trans transitioned to MS teams. And along with a team, you can easily do a, you know, a chat with everybody, so it would just, I think, would need to have very specific guidelines on what features. To use in teams and which ones, we should not per the Open Meeting Act, like. You know, view only documents would be, would be fine.
If it's available, it will get used.
Yeah, I can tell you the AI model.
Regardless of the role, it's great. If it's available, it'll get used regardless of role.
You think so? I mean, how many of the?
I think it's more than a think.
There's what, five of us here, like, we can't, like.
Not comment, yeah.
But if there's a view only, I don't know, maybe that's something for staff to look into, is there a way to have a view only folder? That is a little bit more. Fail safe. Without using additional features.
Because you gotta remember, this board will rotate from time to time.
Correct.
So it's a matter of reeducating everybody.
And and I also think there there is to.
Every year.
It if, assuming that it is not possible to totally disable, right? But if for some reason you can't do that. Even if the five of you, of course, you would never comment and violate the Opens Meeting Act, but. Public perception, if the if the ability is there, I don't know, that's just, it seems like. Potentially fraught with peril, even if.
Right.
Not abused.
So that, I mean, it's something to. There may not be a way, but if there is a way for us to have. Yeah, I mean. Would just be something to look at and come back and and say, oh, here are the options, or we don't have options, I don't know.
And we can see the actual, the lead developer for teams lives in Gettysburg.
Well, there. Well, tell him we need a solution. Um. Okay. Um, I I. I think a couple of the things Commissioner Turncrisp we have coming up in the near future, I think we we talked to Ms. Willitt about having impact fees and solar fields come back soon.
Yeah, we're working on solar fields.
Yeah.
It's just, uh, right now, Kim is tied up with all.
Yes, and then, um. This, in light of the workshop this this afternoon on the calming, a traffic calming study. I know that that's completely separate than the green, the green turn arrow at the square, because that's outside of their jurisdiction. Jurisdiction, but. I had a thought. We've been pushing for a green turn arrow, maybe, maybe they would be open to a delayed green. Instead of a. Green arrow, which still would alleviate some of that backup. And it shouldn't really require. New hardware per se, but just. Retiming the lights, so that could be an option, you know, to someone try to get us, there might be a good compromise until we fight.
If you don't have the error, though, you won't know the other traffic, the other way, other way has a red light.
Okay. Um. Alright, so never mind then.
Pushing, we're gonna, we're gonna find that right person, it just takes. It takes the right person to finally go, oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. Alright.
We're, we're not, we're not giving up.
Yeah, in the past, they agreed upon it, but it would only be if you eliminated the. The hidden bargain on the square. For that traffic to have that extra width.
Alright, any? Um. So if we send comments or questions, Mayor Davis, you would forward it to the, or put it on a D C C or something, okay? Alright, so. I I think that might be in light of the time, the best step. And then based on that, we can always decide if we want to bring something back or talk in more detail. Thoughts? Yeah?
No.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Nope, I'm sorry, I heard you, I heard you breathe, so I turn to you. Alright, so we've reviewed the commissioner priority list. Um. So we're looking then to uh, set the agenda for the April eighth meeting, is that something we're prepared for?
Yes. So, um. For admin business, for consideration, approval of election judges for the twenty twenty-five Town of Emmitsburg elections. Uh, consent agenda for consideration, proclamation thanking Eric Soder for work on the twenty twenty-five Town of Emmitsburg comprehensive plan.
Uh huh.
Also the same thing, uh, proclamation thanking Diane Wallbreaker for her work on the comprehensive plan. And then I have for consideration proclamation declaring September twenty twenty-five National Recovery Month. Um, under agenda items, we have for discussion and consideration. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three, uh, amending Title Eight, establishing a rental registration program. Um. For discussion and consideration. Excuse me, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five. I believe it should be fifteen. Yes, twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, amending Title Eight, establishing uh, vacant property registration and tax ordinance. Then I have a discussion related to expanding the community garden. And number four, approval of um, resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, are. Authorizing Mayor Davis and the town manager to file an application for federal assistance with the U S T A. Rural Development for the West Main Street Water Line Replacement Project for consideration.
Um. Do, this is a silly question, for the proclamations for Eric, Diana, National Recovery, can, does. Should that go under administrative versus consent? Or? Because here we had. Oh, no, wait, no, it was under consent, never mind. Um. I. Okay. I thought we had talked about with Ms. Willitt's bringing solar fields back for September.
It is. Yes, upcoming items.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure that Kim's gonna be able with the audit.
Okay. Alright, I was just. He said.
Let's see, uh, by the time. The eighteenth rolls around. Where Kim is, and we can always add it. At our workshop, right?
Yeah, I suppose we could. Um. And then, um. I think. And it not necessarily for September, but I would like to consider in the future. Uh, looking. At how we structure uh. Our code and revisiting that when it comes to committees. Um. As far as. Maybe there can be consistency with all committees having agendas and minutes posted online. Um. And potentially even adding a space in the agenda for when we have parks and rec. And citizens advisory to have it actually be. A line item that we can review. Uh, or have an update on those committees. Um, so that is not something that gets lost in the shuffle. Um, I'm only thinking of that as far as transparency, um, and impact is, you know, making sure everybody can find what they need. Maybe clear up some confusion, I think some of it's outlined in in the ordinance or code already, so I don't know if that would require an ordinance change, but maybe that's something that. We could look at making more consistent and. Um. At least with posting agendas and minutes, um, videos can be at a different discussion, because I know that's a lot more work. Uh, thoughts, feedback?
Monday's committee, we didn't have enough or form.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Right. Right. I mean, even if.
We do take minutes, we have a present.
Getting the people to come to the meeting.
Well, is there a way that even if it said update on parks and rec, we didn't have a, we didn't have a quorum, but. Had we, these are some of the topics that we floated around, just.
Can you, if you don't have a quorum, you can't, they they can't move forward, so it's just informal discussion at that point.
Just friends talking.
Yeah.
Sorry, say it again.
It's just friends talking then. They can't, they can't take count actions.
So in the very least. We can't, we can have agendas or minutes posted. Is there a reason to take minutes if we don't have a quorum?
No, no.
Then if we don't have a quorum. Have a thing in the code that says we don't meet.
Then there was no meeting due due to the lack of a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay, see, because I don't know that committee members are aware of how important it is to have that quorum. So.
There should be no minutes for a a meeting that had no quorum.
Okay, but there should be minutes if there is a forum.
Correct.
Right. And if those exist, the agenda and the minutes could be posted online for transport.
And like you said earlier, I believe all the committees have that outlined in their. In the ordinance. There's supposed to be an officers, the three D officers for that and what what they do in the minutes. I believe that's all. Still outlined within the code. It tells you.
Yeah.
What to do with the minutes, how they, how they pay someone to the town staff.
Right, right. So in that case, it could be an ordinance change, because I'm thinking when I was on Citizens Advisory was. Uh, the notes get filed in the special binder on somebody's house, but it could be as simple as for. For consistency for those committees, if there was minutes that were taken and there was a quorum, we can post them online, so. Where you click the little button on the website versus minutes.
Right, and it'd be the same way as ours. And so once they're approved by that committee, the next meeting, then there would be official meetings.
Right.
Minutes.
So that would probably take a code change the way I think it's written now, but it's something I would like to discuss.
Code or policy change.
Yes. Right, right. It would, like you said, it would be after it was approved and.
That'd be the official minutes. So you, I mean, immediately you have a draft set.
Sure.
But the official minutes would be for approval.
Yeah, so just like cleaning up the language for consistency. But I think it's helpful to know moving forward to let members know if we don't have a quorum, we don't have a meeting.
Correct.
And then we don't have to be a bunch of friends sitting around. Just chit chatting if it's not going to go anywhere.
Correct.
Okay. Like I said, not necessarily for next time, but I would like to look at it maybe in the near future. I think it could be easily tweaked within the ordinance.
I I don't know if we need an ordinance change or not, but when I took the Open Meetings Act training. Through M M L. They told us that if a commission or a committee is established by charter or code. And the Open Meetings Act applies and there should be an agenda and minutes. So all of our commissions and committees are in our charter and code. So that rule would therefore apply.
Correct.
Correct. Right, and then for consistency, being able to post them. So that that can be easily referenced if need be. Alright. Alright.
Alright, question on the agenda items. I think it was item number three. You said ordinance twenty five dash fifteen. That is for the. What was it called? For the.
Big and property.
Right, so we've already decided, we've already decided to see that would not be a notice coming back, could be a draft coming back for for discussion.
Okay.
So.
So.
Then that'd be, are you going to be prepared for that for the next meeting or with a with a discussion, with a with a draft?
I can have a draft by next meeting.
Okay, so so it'd be for. Discussion only.
Yeah, yes, based based on the conversation tonight, that would be a discussion item, not a consideration item.
Right.
So would the same thing apply to rental registration, or are we hoping after the workshop, we'd be able to move to a vote?
Was there rent, was the rental one on here? Upcoming September, I don't think.
The rental registration is on August eighteenth.
That'd be the same thing, though.
Well. No, it's on August.
That is a workshop.
For the workshop.
Yeah.
You're doing a September town meeting, right?
Well, and then it says September eighth, one of the option, one of the items was rental registration ordinance. And that, that's my question, meaning the workshop. Would that be enough time to have a potential final, or is it discussion again?
I believe we could turn around that in that time, yes.
Okay.
I still think it'd be a discussion for the board to have its. Of review in a in a draft form of ordinance, too.
I I would agree. I would like to see a draft before we take it to vote, so we are not trying to hash everything out in one night.
Right.
Yeah. Good questions. Any other questions?
For the community garden discussion, are we going to review the proposal? I've only seen one proposal. Are we going to have? Two proposals to review or?
Is this?
To be, to be determined.
Is this a something we're voting on? For the expansion or the plan?
That's what I thought.
For the expansion or the plan? I'm confused.
I don't know that for sure. I can check with.
The difference.
Well, because you can expand, you have permission to expand to the full lot without necessarily having. Your plan ready to go, because that could be contingent upon money coming in as grants or with budgeted within town funds.
I thought it was coming before the board was a review and discussion of the possibility of expanding. And you get the blessing, can he do that? Can it be done?
Right. That, yeah, that's what I was thinking, just talking with him today. It sounded like, he's like, I just want to know if the possibility, if we have. Permission to expand and then the plan based on money would come. Down the line.
Right, because then that would come probably mostly from grants and.
Right. So that's, that's all I wanted to.
I think it's just the expand, is the approval to expand or not.
But but as part of that, the C A C had submitted a plan or a proposal.
They did not submit a plan.
And some of the members, they have it, it hasn't been approved by the members of the committee. And they asked me not to share it until it was.
Okay, has the C A C?
They have a draft.
C A C has a draft.
Draft, but the members of that committee have not approved the draft.
Was the draft. Well, they could, they can't approve it, they can concur.
Right.
Did they provide concurrence on the expansion plan?
No.
Okay, so we don't have concurrence from C A C on either the expansion or the new proposal. So why do we need it on the agenda?
Well, if I couldn't, the the way I interpreted it, and Mayor Davis, maybe you can correct me if you have a different interpretation, is that. Sorry, it's late. Now I just. Had a blank. Initially, Mr. Deathridge wanted to ask. Do I have permission to expand? In talking to him, it sounds like he doesn't want to expand next year, because that's a lot of work, but he wants to. Take time to work on what he currently has and then develop a plan over the next year or so. Based upon funding that might be allocated within the budget or through grant funds. That.
So my, my understanding is that Jack is going to bring proposal to the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting this month. With what he intends.
Okay, so why is it going to Park Rec?
I couldn't answer you that.
Okay, so I just want.
I'm just going from a Facebook post they made.
Alright, so. Go ahead.
What we were asked to do was to was to consider. Jack's proposal or request, request to expand. I think he wants the whole thing really, but whatever, to whatever size lot he wants. And I think that's what the discussion is about. Are we going to approve or disapprove? The expansion.
Right.
What everybody else wants to, for the Parks Committee, the C A C's committee, or even at this point, Jack of who's planting what and where and when. I don't think that's part of the discussion. Is the garden going to grow or not grow, regardless of what it's growing? And I think, I mean, now now we seem to be having the agenda item discussion more, and I think it's just a matter of. That that was the agenda item was.
Right.
Request was to, can he expand or not? And we made, we made a. A couple of meetings ago, we made a. Strong, strong, strong vote of saying we're good with what he wanted to do currently, and now he wants to do more. So now he needs. This board or somebody's approval, because he was.
Right, and I think where the confusion came in is because. Ms. Willis asked him for a plan, so. Whether or not that plan is tied to the expansion, I think those are two different things.
I think the plan was just. How many planters, what we call raise beds, that he wanted there and how much space he did, not. Not, not, not as to what is he planting, right?
No, his plan has what he is, what he is planting. But I I guess what I'm saying, I see, I think asking for the plan kind of muddled muddled the waters. I feel like. He needs direction on, yes, you will eventually have, you will have permission for the entire lot, and then the rest of that will fall into place based on feedback.
Right, so what is with the, with the people that come in and say, I want to raise bed? It sounds like we should let it on the agenda and have a discussion next meeting.
Yeah.
Because right now, we're having the discussion.
Alright, so this would just be.
A discussion.
Discussion. Thank you, Mayor Davis. We need to, we need to focus. Alright, yeah, so discussion. Thank you. Um, alright, anything else? Alright, can we? Uh, is there a motion to accept the agenda for September eighth as modified?
So moved.
Thank you, is there? Thank you, um, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any against? Alright, good. Motion carries five to zero. Um, and that leaves us to turning to our last agenda item. I need to find the word.
Join the meeting.
Well, and that was, that's what I asked, was wondering, because do, this says now we turn to our final.
Read, read, read the closing statement, vote on the closing statement, vote to close the meeting, everybody leaves.
So, okay, so we vote to.
Me too.
So two different votes, Clark?
No comment.
Vote for the closing statement and then vote to close. Two different ones, because it says, do I hear a motion to adopt the closing statement as read and enter into a closed meeting?
It it's one motion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright. Now we turn to our final agenda item. The Board of Commissioners intend to meet in a closed session to discuss applications for real property. This is the final agenda item, and the Board of Commissioners will now be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended. Pursuant to the Maryland Code Annotated General Provisions Article three dash three oh five D. Right, was it B before? Is that correct? Is it? D or B? The other one said D, okay. D, prior to a closing, closing a meeting, the commissioners must conduct. A recorded vote to close the meeting and make a written statement of the reason for closing the meeting, including a citation of authority. For closing the meeting under Maryland Code Annotated General Provisions. Uh, Article three dash three oh five B. And a listing of topics to be discussed. I will now read the proposed closing statement, which has been prepared by staff. The topic to be discussed during the closed meeting is for real property. The authority for a closed meeting or a meeting in closed session for this purpose is Maryland Code Annotated General Provisions. Article three dash three oh five B three, which authorizes the Board of Commissioners to meet in closed session. Vote to consider the acquisition of real property for a public person, purpose as it directly and matters directly related thereto. The purpose will be to get direction from the board on the possible purchase of a vacant lawn on South Seaton Avenue. Do I hear a motion to adopt the closing statement as read and enter into a closed meeting? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries five to zero, and that means we're adjourning our open meeting at the same time, correct? Or does that separate?